Okay, the time is now five oh four P M. Good evening and welcome to the December tenth two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. I'm Jonathan Briggs, Chair of the Committee, Vice Chair of the Board, and District Two Board Member. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Um, Ms. Roll Call, I'm sorry, Ms. Lopez, uh, please call the roll.
Mister Briggs?
Uh, President.
Ms. Walker?
Present, present.
Ms. Booster Strather?
Present.
Mister Jackson?
Here.
We have four members in presence.
Okay, with the quorum present, the Policy and Governance Committee will come to order. We're now going to move on to item one point three, adoption of the meeting agenda. Please note, uh, the following items were removed from the agenda to allow the General Counsel additional time to review. So Agenda Item four point four, Policy forty one thirteen, Community Involvement in the Principal Selection Process. Agenda Item five point one, um, Developing Curriculum Documents for Instructional Programs in Elementarys and Sec- Secondary Schools. Agenda Item five point two, um, Possession and Use of Alcohol and Drugs on School Grounds. And Agenda Item five point four, Policy fifty one sixty eight, Automated External Regulators. There are no objections, the committee shall adopt the December tenth two thousand twenty four meeting agenda as amended. There being no corrections, the November twelfth two thousand twenty four meeting minutes are approved. Alright, so we're now going to move on to item, uh, two point one, which is Public Comment. Uh, and this is for all registered public comment speakers, which can be live, pre-recorded, and written. Um, Registered Public Comment Speakers can be live, pre-recorded, um, using video, audio, or written. There are no live comments this evening, but there is one written comment from Dr. Donna Christie, Prince George's County Educators Association, wrote in on Board Policy eleven hundred, Community Schools, that is, uh, notated, um, on Board Docs for Public Consumption as well as for Board Members to Review. Um, so there are no pre-recorded comments, and with that being said, uh, we're going to move on to, um, Item three point O Legislative Update. Um, gonna share that there is no updates this evening, aside from the fact that the Prince George's County Delegation is having a meeting. We've shared, uh, uh, talking points and other additional information with Board Members. Um, and so we will kind of go into greater discussion in, um, subsequent, uh, committee meetings about any additional pieces, as well as the ones we enter into legislative season starting at the beginning of the year. So a lot more to come there. Um, we're going to move on to Item four point O Policies for First Consideration Discussion Items. So there are three items for discussion. We'll have two rounds per discussion, um, which will be two and a half minutes. Um, so we're going to move to Item four point one, Policy, uh, uh, one thirteen, Informational Material and Announcements. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Welsh for an overview of Policy one thirteen, Informational Material and Announcements.
Good evening. Um, so Rose, normally, uh, um, Cindy will scroll down so we can just look at the changes, and since this is wasn't, um, was actual old policy, um, it's, um, there, there's a lot of changes to that policy.
Yes, give me one moment, I'm trying to download it.
And Mrs. Welsh may, oh, I was gonna say, because maybe you could provide the overview while we were.
Well, I certainly can. Excuse me, the, the, um, the policy and the process has been in the past that the any, anything that anyone ever went to distribute to any school in the system, they would have to go through Office of General Counsel and get it approved. And, um, that is very cumbersome approach, um, and quite honestly, if you have standards set up, there's no reason why a principal of a school couldn't, uh, approve, um, approve a policy, approve a, uh, something that someone wanted to distribute. So this policy is basically laying out for everyone, um, what they, what items, what organizations we will distribute information for, to, and it also talks about, it can be, it can be like, uh, distributed, uh, materials, like print and materials that might be at, depending on the nature of it, it could be sitting on a table or something, or it actually is going to be counted out and go to each of the schools, each of the classrooms, depending on if it's specifically, say, an activity for students. Um, and it, and it does not, and if there's any, any confusion or questions about it, then they can certainly go to the superintendent's designated, which would be our Communications Office, if there was a question about, is this appropriate or not? So very quickly, um, so, um, it is, it is a service that the school system has provided for a long time to lots of different organizations, and our policy says that the groups that we automatically do present, allow for it is, of course, um, anything within the school system, and then agencies and departments within county, state, and federal government, uh, providing though that the materials do not advocate for the election or defeat of any candidate, or for, or against any referendum question or matters pending before any governing body, unless the referendum question or matter directly, uh, and exclusively affects Prince George's County Public Schools. Um, because we don't want, you know, political things being, you know, out there, not that we are against them, but we, we don't want to be in, telling kids how to vote, or what to think about, or whatever, when it comes to those kinds of things. And then also parent-teacher organizations or associations, as well as the district's Parent and Community Advisory, uh, uh, Committee, which is our P C A C. And then also the Excellence in Education Foundation for Prince George's County Public Schools. Then we have the Foundation of Automat- Auto- Automotive, uh, Automotive and Construction Technology for Students Incorporated, which is an organization that works very closely with our C T E programs and provides a lot of services to those students. And then any, any other, um, organization deemed appropriate by the Board of Education or the Superintendent. Um, and, um, and that's basically it. Um, and then we do allow for some nonprofits that they are permitted to display, if it's in fact, something that is, uh, there to support the school and is educational. Um, as well as every, everything that comes through has to have on it this disclaimer that says, these materials are neither sponsored nor endorsed by the Board of Education, Prince George's County Public Schools, or this school. Um, so, because we're just really doing, um, a favor, and it says the outside materials must be approved in advance by the principal of the school. Um, now, they should, they will be rejected, if the principal would reject them if the materials didn't contain the disclaimer, or if it, um, if it was, let's say it was from a not, a for-profit entity, and it was really, it wasn't related, had ain't nothing to do with education enrichment, extracurricular learning opportunities, or provisions of resources for the school, and then also if it were vulgar, lewd, offensive, uh, or otherwise would undermine the school's basic educational mission. So it's really a pretty, uh, cut and simple, uh, uh, policy in terms of what we're going to accept and what the rules are for anything that's going to be distributed.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Um, if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend Policy one thirteen to the policy's sponsor for revision approval?
I did have something, I'm gonna try to put down my hand real quick. So, um, I just, I love this, thank you so much. I think the principals definitely should be empowered to make that decision for their schools. I wonder what you all think of the principal, if they do reject it, to need to just put it in writing the reason. And let me tell you the, why I say that. I say that because I, I can see now appeals coming to the board or some sort, and I'm just wondering if they could just go ahead and let them know a one-liner as to why, based on the, the policy. What do you think about that?
I think it's a good idea, but it's up to you guys. I do think it's good, though.
Yeah, I'm a fan. Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, Board Member Boozer Strather?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I'm noticing that the line that's on the current website for the process for flyers and materials is, the disclaimer is, the Prince George's County Public Schools is not sponsoring, endorsing, or recommending the activities announced in this flyer, uh, slash material. Is the statement in this policy a deliberate upgrade and new statement? Or is it a holdover, and that the statement on the website may be what we want to use now?
We can certainly do that. I mean, it, the, uh, quite honestly, I just put the statement together, so I didn't even realize there was a statement on the website. So, I mean, I certainly, I have no problems putting it, putting it off the website.
Yeah, that's the, uh, fl- process for Flyers Materials Review. I, I just always Google it when I need it. Flyers and Materials Distribution Guidelines is the header on this webpage, under General Counsel.
Okay. That's. I'll put that in.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, so the question is, shall the committee recommend Policy one thirteen, Informational Materials and Announcements to the policy sponsor for revision or approval? Any discussion?
With the recommended modifications.
With the, uh, yeah, with the recommended modifications under consideration. Um, any discussion? Can Miss Lopez, please, uh, take a roll call vote? And if you're speaking, you're muted, yeah.
Um, Mister Briggs?
Hi.
Um, Ms. Walker?
Hi.
Ms. Booster Strather?
Hi.
We have three in the affirmative.
Alright, so Policy one thirteen, Informational Materials and Announcements will be recommended to the policy's sponsor for revision approval, with the additional, um, recommendations under consideration. We're now going to move to Item four point two, Policy eleven hundred, Community Schools. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Welsh for an overview of Policy eleven hundred, Community Schools.
So Policy eleven hundred, it hasn't been that long ago since we actually, um, had, um, revised this policy. However, um, there, um, we did get comment from, um, P G C E A. Um, but even more importantly, there was a law that was passed in the last legislative session, um, that actually laid out. It was our Senate Bill one sixty-one that made some specific, uh, changes to, um, to the requirements. And so I did take the policy and go through, I did not put any comments related to P G C A at this point, because that's a decision all of you would be making, but as far as what the law requires, I did go ahead and make changes to the, the, this policy, so that it reflects the, the new legal requirements. So if, if you could just, uh, move this one through, please, um, Rose, uh, it's the first comments I think are on page, uh, like the fourth page out. Actually, it might be earlier, I guess I'm looking at my, uh, yes, community schools, actually, the law changed the death, thank you, stay right there. The league, so the, the law actually specifically specified what we need to have there to define what a community school is. So they have, they have basically added the following, where, uh, which is quite interesting, that, um, not only establishes a set of strategic partnerships, which definitely the community schools do offer, but now, um, and other community resources, but now it's leveraged share accountability, so it's saying it's, it does not just the school system, but it's, it's, you know, all the players, and then collaborative leadership, and then capacity building, and then authentic family and community engagement using a student-centered approach. Also, they have put some inclusive language to improve, to promote inclusive student achievement. Um, they also included, um, educators as, um, um, the well-being of students, families, and educators and the community through a variety of engaging practices, including the provision of wraparound services. So that was the first change in the law. And then if you scroll down to the next red lines. Going, I think it's, it's like in the next page. Yes, so wraparound services, they did add, um, they added for, uh, safe transportation to and from school and off-site. They, uh, added learning opportunities, including apprenticeship programs, so they were a little bit more clear about that. And, um, also vision, hearing, and dental care services, uh, so hearing was added now, in addition to vision and dental care. And then, in addition to the social workers, mental mentors, counselors, psychologists, and restored practice coaches, they've also added therapists as a part of this. And this, if you recall, when we were doing the field trip policy, um, uh, we, one of the things we did note in looking at numbers is the community schools appear to be doing a lot more field trips than the, than the other schools, although we do now have like, I think, a hundred and twenty-nine community schools, so that's the majority of our schools. But they were doing more, but part of that was because that's considered a wraparound service for the students in the community school. And so therefore, there's funding for that, which makes it a little bit easier for the school to be able to take the students on the field trips. So then if you scroll down further. Um, so, and that, it did, originally it said you had to have one, have a community, uh, school coordinator, and now it's saying at least one community school coordinator. And that might be, that might be really important, especially depending on, you know, we have some schools that have very large numbers of students, you know? Then we have schools very small numbers, but in the larger schools, it might be necessary to have a second community school coordinator. And then, um, they, um, want to make sure that, um, they, that we implement, um, and this is the, uh, let me see what this is, the, um, and, uh, uh, give me one second. The community score just says, will implement in a manner responsive to needs assessment required under nine point nine dash one oh four of the education article. So one of the things that we're going to run into this as we go through, the, uh, sta- it says specifically in this law that the state, the state's director of community schools, not our director, but the state's director is responsible for developing the actual, uh, community school assessment. Um, and so, um, and that's going to be an important piece of it, so that, so that's, I just say that to you, because they're referencing nine point nine dash one oh four. And then the next one is, they changed everything from promote to implement, so if that sort of indicates, they were a little sort of warm about moving forward, but now they're definite that they want you to, uh, they'll all definitely want you to do these types of things. Um, they also, in terms of the community school leadership team, every school should have a leadership team, and it should include members who represent students, families, and educators. Also, the, um, the, each community school shall have an experienced and qualified school coordinator, at least one. And, and these were the things that they added into the law for the responsibilities of each of the school, uh, community school coordinators. So they are responsible for completing the Common Needs Assessment, which I had, which is provided by the State Director of Community Schools. Um, and then, once they get the results of their assessment, then they are to develop an implementation plan in collaboration with other interested stakeholders, which is based on the results of the needs assessment. Um, there is coordinating, uh, support programs, altering, um, reviewing the implementation plan at least once every three years, altering the implementation plan using results of common needs assessments and provisions of wraparound services direct, to address changes in students' needs. And then, the altered implementation plan must be approved by the superintendent slash designated, and then it is submitted to the Maryland State Department of Education for review. So they are reviewing each of, each of, this is going to be a lot, but a lot of this, every community school in the state, their implementation plan. And then if you move forward, scroll further, I don't, I can't recall if there's anything more here. That might be the big changes. I think that is the, the last of the changes that were, that was in the law for this up from last year. So this does reflect the updated, um, the, the legal requirements that are updated. Um, I do know that I did speak with, I did share, um, and I don't know, actually, um, Chair Briggs, are you, do, are you going to share like the comments with them, or how, how is that going to work with the, the committee? Because, or did you already? Maybe you did, I don't know.
So, uh, Dr. Donna Christie did pu- up, um, uh, post, um, testimony, and that's on Board Doc, so that's for everyone to see what she, the memo that she presented, as well as additional statements.
Okay, so then, so then I think maybe the committee needs the opportunity to really re- review those statements, and then, um, because I think we need to come back. I did speak with Dr. Horton, who is our Director of Community Schools for the school system. Um, and, um, I do think she wants to be involved in the next conversation we have related to the recommendations for P G C A, uh, just to ensure that we don't end up with any unintended consequences from anything that we might add into the policy. But I do think it need adequate time to review those, um, so.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so it sounds like there may be some objections to, uh, sending this to the policy sponsor for revision approval. I'm going to turn to Board Member Boozer Strather first.
Well, I, I do like the, I, you know, the idea of more time and to have, um, uh, Dr. Williams Horton in, in a conversation as well, like we've done with some other division leaders when we've, uh, been working on policies. The, I, I agree in, in my quick reading of everything from P G C A, I agree with everything they've, they've noted. Um, the, there are some details that have been missing for years. I, I used to be very engaged with this when it was, when it was launched, and we did rotate, so there's two community school steering committees. There's the district level one, that I believe this policy seems to only be referencing, but we have a hundred and twenty-nine school-based community, community school steering committees. And I feel like we don't really pull in the blueprints, direction on those school-based steering committees, and really hold the school-based steering committees accountable, and I would really like to see that strengthened in here. Our expectations of agenda setting and membership and meetings and outcomes, right? It's a tiny bit in there, but this broader district-level community school steering committee, one, I think it needs to say district level, like we have to label it. Um, but that's really where P G C A is offering some really solid, um, feedback about agenda setting, rotation of leadership, which did happen when I was on this committee fi- four and fi- four and five years ago. So I think it's great time to talk to, to, you know, Director Williams Horton, and take these ideas out of the P G C A memo, and get, get the, get those nuances in there. So if we're saying we're going to have more time, I think that's great, because I think, like I said, I feel like there's a couple things from the blueprint originally that we still never quite got in here, like the first time we revised it. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so the question is, shall the committee recommend Policy eleven hundred, Community Schools, to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Lopez, please take a roll call vote.
Mister Briggs?
No.
Ms. Walker?
No.
Ms. Booster Strather?
No.
We have a three on the negative.
Alright, um, so the, uh, the call for, uh, well, I'm sorry, there's a new question now. The question is, shall the committee postpone Policy eleven hundred to the new, to the next Policy and Governance Committee Meeting? Um, Ms. Lopez, please take a roll call.
Mister Briggs?
Hi.
Ms. Walker?
Hi.
Ms. Booster Strather?
Hi.
There are three in the affirmative.
Alright, so Policy eleven hundred, Community Schools, um, will be postponed until the next Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. We're now going to move.
Can I raise, I'm sorry, I can't raise my hand on here. Um, can you also add the action for us to invite, um, Dr. Horton, um, as well, please, so she could come in and talk to us when we talk this again?
Yeah, well, uh, Robin and I will, we always normally, uh, make sure that, and that was already on the agenda, was that Dr. Horton would definitely be here to present, so yes, that is going to happen.
And I did, I spoke with her, and she definitely said she would come.
Um, so we're going to move into Item four point three, Policy thirty-one sixty, Transfer of Funds. Um, I recognize Mrs. Welsh for an overview of Policy thirty-one sixty, Transfer of Funds.
Okay. So again, this is another policy that is a, is an old policy that, um, that we just really need to update, uh, and provide a little, it just provides a little bit of direction. Um, and so the, the policy statement is, it talks about the fact that the superintendent is responsible, and this is, most of this is almost directly out of the law, is responsible for the management of the operating capital budget of the school system, and, um, the most efficient and effective use of appropriated funds and meeting the goals and objectives of the, of the Board of Education. And so this, this has to do with transferring. So the categories, the definitions with intra-category transfers, which means you're just, so within each of the categories, there's all these little subcategories. And so when you develop the budget, and you know this, you have this all broken out, and so if you want to transfer that over, that's, that's one piece of it. And then the big area has to do with the intercategory transfers, which you're actually transferring between the major budget categories. And I have listed out in the policy of the major budget categories, which again comes directly from the law. And if you look at your budget book, you'll see it's pretty much aligned just that way, because that's, you know, how we have to report everything out, um, to the state. Um, and so that, as far as the standards, uh, once the budgets are submitted to the board and approved by the, uh, county council, then the superintendent's responsible for the day-to-day management oversight of the fiscal affairs and the management of the activities related to major budget categories. So he must inform you, the board, of any intra-category transfers made within any of the major budget cata- uh, categories. So those are the ones where like, say, instruction, they're changing some of their subcategories, they're moving some money. And then he is also responsible for reporting the intercategory transfers to the county council within fifteen days after the end of each month. Then for the intercategory transfers, which is really the area that I think most people are most interested in, in knowing about, is, um, and again, this is for the operating and capital budget, uh, first of all, the board absolutely must approve those, those intercategory transfers, and then it must go to the county council to, uh, approve. So the superintendent's responsible for providing the board then also with a narrative explanation of the requested transfers between the major budget categories, and then the amount of transfer for the board approval. And I did go back to March, like last, uh, March twenty twenty-four is, um, one of the meet, uh, meetings where that you did exactly that, and I saw the statement that they, that the, um, that Lisa Howe provides, and it does show all the money that's either going or leaving a category, and where it's going, and then there's a narrative that it does explain what's the rationale for those changes. Um, so if the board does approve the requested transfers between the major budget categories, then the board authorizes the superintendent to request the county council's approval. And the report of the, of the intercategory transfer shall be provided to the county council within fifteen days after the end of the month in which the board approved the transfer. Um, and then if the county council fails to take action on the superintendent's request for, uh, transfer between the major budget categories within thirty days after receipt of the report of the intercategory transfers, um, substantiating the transfer, the failure to take action shall constitute approval by the council. So, so that's pretty, it's really pretty straightforward, because it's just really what the law requires us to do.
Yeah, okay, um, so if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend Policy thirty-one sixty to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Okay, there being no objections, Policy thirty-one sixty will be recommended to the policy's sponsor for revision approval. We're now going to move on to Item five point O Policies for Second Consideration. Um, there are five items for consideration. Um, the first is Item five point three, Policy thirty-three twenty-three, Purchasing. Item five point five, Policy eighty-two sixty-five, Evaluating the Superintendent of Schools. Policy ninety-one ten, Number of Members in Terms of Office Recision. Policy fifty, uh, five point seven, I'm sorry, Item five point seven, Policy ninety-three ten, Adoption of Policies, Recision. And Item five point eight, Policy ninety-three thirty, Adoption and Amendments of Administrative Regulations, Recision. There are no objections, the committee shall recommend the policies under Agenda Items five point three and five point five through five point eight to the full board for public comment consideration. Okay, see, uh, see a hand, so I'm assuming that is an objection. I want to, uh, acknowledge, um, Board Member Walker.
Thank you so much. Um, yes, so these are going to the public, I think is what I heard you say. And so in that, will, they'll have an opportunity to take a look at the details inside of the recisions. And I guess what I'm trying to just make sure that we've taken a look at, or maybe this is our opportunity too as well, is to ensure that those are captured somewhere else. So for instance, if with the recisions that's happening, that if there's anything in there that is something policy procedure by way of something that we still should be doing, that is captured somewhere else. So would you expect that those type of thi- that those type of things are, um, happening during this, um, feedback period?
So, um, and, and what I would say is this, I mean, this is, I think, in just for context for Mrs. Welsh, like, I think where this is coming from is there are some discrepancies around certain bylaws that have been rescinded that we believe may have had some language that wasn't redundant. And we talked about this on Monday. The irony, the irony is that, um, we have had these conversations, so.
No, that's not what I'm asking. I just want to be clear on the reason I'm asking it. And I'm happy to talk this one, but the reason I'm really asking it is because I don't know the, I, I wasn't, I'm not very clear on the answer to the question. It really is just for that, that question. It literally is, when we have these recensions, no matter what we've had in the past, I'm really asking for my own understanding. Is this the opportunity for people to get input, even board members to give input on making sure that, that, um, things are in other ones? That's, that's really it. Seriously. That's all.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what I was going to. Yeah, I was going to. So the, the, the additional piece that I was going to say was that this is the time really where it's like, as you're looking in board docs at the policy that we post. And as you see, it says a rescission, if there's something you see that is going to be different from whatever it is, we're going to be adding it to, then that's the time to really flag that language and these would be the discussions. So this is absolutely the answer to that. Yes. Um, Board Member Boozer Strutter.
Yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm following up on sort of like a logical pathway here. I think what we're looking for is that everything has been moved to the rules of procedure or that, that the, that, that, that we've checked off that every, that, because this is mostly just a, a title of a document transition that we have, as a board have recognized we need to make. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and I just want to say thank you for, thank you to both of you for kind of calling this out. Cause I think this just lets us know that we got to do a better job of like, in the process of all these changes, which are significant, making it really clear. Because I think even when we have the conversation about the O M A violation, like these are things that the public should be knowing as well and everyone should be clear. So I think that is just like feedback that we got to do a better job of like, making sure that it's all, you know, digestible and accessible and clear. And we may need to repeat it a few times and also have some cheat sheets. So we're going to do all of that. So I guess the question now is, shall the committee recommend the policies under agenda item five point three and five point five through five point eight to the full board for public comment consideration? Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Lopez, please call, uh, take a roll call vote.
Mr. Briggs?
Hi.
Ms. Walker?
Hi.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Hi.
We have three in there, affirmative.
All right. So the policies under agenda item five point three and five point five through five point eight will be recommended to the full board for public comment consideration. We're now going to move on to item six point O, Policies for Third Consideration. Um, that includes item six point one, um, evaluation of library materials. Item six point two, policy twenty-five sixty-six, student identification cards. I am going to pause. I saw your hand, uh, Mrs. Welsh. Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm a little slow in my response, but back to the other ones about the recisions. Do you think when we put it out for public comment, we should maybe state that, uh, because I'm just looking at the ones that are being rescinded? And it's actually, it is related to, um, that procedures for, uh, two of them. And then the one is, is redundant to another policy. Do, should we add a little statement or something? Would that be helpful?
Yes. I think in this context, less is not more. I think we probably need to be very explicit because it'll help us on the front end if I think we do.
Okay.
So I think we should over communicate here.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to, um, item six point one and start over. These are for third consideration. Um, so that is evaluation of library materials. Item six point two, policy twenty-five sixty-six, student identification cards. Item six point three, policy fifty-one thirteen, attendance, absence, intruency. Item six point four, policy fifty-one forty-three, bullying, harassment or intimidation. Item six point five, policy sixty-one fifty-three, field trips. And item six point six, policy eighty-one zero-one, policy development. There are six items for consideration that would be considered as a consent agenda. These policies were distributed to the general public for comments and no, uh, public comments were received. Um, so if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend the policies under agenda items six point one through six point six to the full board for first consideration. Okay. There being no objections, the policies under agenda items six point one through six point six will be recommended to the full board for first consideration. Okay. I just want to say really quickly, because this is a very fast meeting and I'm sure people who are used to kind of watching these are like, why are you all going so fast? And why are we not having discussion? We do know there's a very important meeting that's happening tonight, which is with the Prince George's County delegation. And we want to make sure that we're not pulling your attention away from board members that need to be there and want to do some advocacy. I mean, also want to tune into this really important, um, meeting. So we are by no means like making this kind of a model for how we move in the future. We are going to have very substantive, robust discussions and we're going to use a full two hours. But for now, we're having an abbreviated meeting for that purpose. Um, so we're going to move on to item seven point one, closing remarks from the Chair in adjournment. Uh, I, I want to inform the public that legislative season begins in January. We invite all to join our meetings to hear the board and P G C B S's stance on the various bills. The next virtual policy and governance meeting will be on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education webpage for meeting information and updates. Um, there being no further business, I want to thank you all for a great discussion, um, and your attendance. The time is now five forty P M. Um, the December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Policy and Governance Committee Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night.